Welcome to those of y'all that I don't see anybody that looks new, but this is pre-council, so we don't vote on anything. We just discuss issues in preparation for the real meeting, which will be at 6:30. And tonight, we've got two things on the agenda, and David, was there any particular thing you needed? I noticed your name got put by the first one, so it's just about extending the budget for two departments, courts and water?
Yes, sir. I do not see any issues with 2018 R-55. I know we'll be discussing the new budget, but as far as item number one goes under new business, I do not see an issue with that.
Okay. Any questions from either the other councilors? On that one, okay. Now, the second one, everyone should have received a very heavy, red-lettered copy from Mr. Rosenberg. This is something that basically, and something I'll caution you to, lately because of the filter that Bill has put on our mail, a lot of things are going to spam. So, you may not find things unless you check your spam almost daily, because I know David did not get one of the responses I sent him, and that may be what happened when you mentioned you didn't get something, so...
Right. I didn't get it from Rob.
So, a lot of things, but it was a red line, where he actually had a red letter. Leslie, did you have any comments, or?
No, I believe they are here if we can hear from them.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of it? Or you can email it to me.
Oh, yeah. I can either email it to you, or...
Well, while I'm here, I can look over it if you want to. I mean, I would like to.
Mayor, I think you have a few comments. Do you want to save those for the other meeting, or do you want to...
No, I mean, if we're able to discuss this, so I can go ahead and introduce it.
Okay, thank you. All right. We've got people here that can answer questions. Thank you.
So, what this is, is something that you've done multiple times over. It's the request for abatements, both state, county, and city, for new business locating in Irondale. We did it most recently with Motion Industries, and I believe with T.E. Stevens, we did something to sum it up. Maybe Stevens was more business license related, but I know it's the exact same process that we used on Motion Industries. I went through it this afternoon to make sure that I could give you at least what I thought was important, and that is the cost benefit to the city, because I think that's really what we're looking at, is what are we giving up, and what are we getting. And I can give you those numbers just real quickly if you'd like, and we'll get that, all the fine documentation in your hands here. I thought you all already had it, but I thought I said that it was not here.
If you would be kind enough, please go over the numbers and...
Okay. All right, so this is Kendall Electric, which you all have met before, and we've talked to on more than one occasion previously. They are looking to relocate here. They currently have a facility in Birmingham, down in the south side area of Birmingham. They're looking to move to Irondale. They have a contract on property. We'll be closing on that soon. It's on Grant Mill Road. To give you the numbers of what the cost, I've been talking about Kendall Electric proposal. That piece of property's been vacant for forever. Yeah, so I don't know how long it's been, but it currently, whether correctly or incorrectly, it currently has a total seventy-two dollar a year tax bill on it. And that's state, county, schools, and city. Our portion of what we're getting off of that piece of property right now is six dollars and sixty-three cents a year.
Wow.
Six dollars and sixty-three cents a year. They are looking to come in and build a facility that will be somewhere in the neighborhood of two million dollars, which will raise the asset on that property. They're asking for abatements on the construction, sales tax, the sales tax on the materials that go into constructing that building, which again is the same type of arrangement that we made with Motion Industries on their renovation that they're doing. And that's where the building materials, they're taxed, they would get that abatement back on just the construction cost and the manufacturing equipment, sales tax there. They're also asking for the adverum property taxes to be abated as well, for ten years. This is all for ten years. For ten years, with that increase in value, that will raise that adverum tax to approximately twenty-six hundred dollars a year. So, six dollars and sixty-three cents now a year to twenty-six hundred dollars a year. So, the total, the total abatement from the city side, and I'm only focusing on the city side, they'll get abatements for the state and the county, and I figure that's, you know, that's the state and the county's issue. But for the city, the total abatement is twenty-six hundred dollars for the sales, I'm sorry, twenty-six thousand dollars over the twelve years, for, over the ten years, for the sales tax, and sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars, I'm sorry, let me back it up, twenty-six thousand for the property tax over the ten years, and sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars for the sales tax portion from the city, for a total of eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars abatement. I don't have a moment to get your papers there, because you'll ask me again what that number is. So, the total abatement that would be coming from the city, both sales tax and adverum tax, would be approximately eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars over ten years. With them coming to Irondale, with our occupational fee that is assessed on businesses, and based off of their payroll estimations, and I did it conservatively, I rounded down, I didn't put in any increase after four years, but over that ten-year period, we would generate, estimated to generate approximately two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. So, sum it up, you're giving up an abatement, approximately eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. You're receiving, now this business coming to Irondale, approximately two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
And that's just the occupational?
Over ten years, yes. You've got business fees, which will be on top of that, but, you know, any of those types of things, you know, count water, you know, and all that stuff. This is purely on the tax.
Question from lady. You said, is that the sales tax for the construction, is that what they purchased to buy the materials?
Yeah, the sales tax.
Whether they buy it in Irondale or in some other city?
Yeah, well, because it's delivered. Whatever, whatever sales tax is collected in Irondale to, for, that will normally come to Irondale, that's what they're talking about. So, if it's delivered here, then they would pay Irondale sales taxes.
If they go outside of the city and make a purchase and bring it themselves, then we don't relate that, is that correct?
Right, right. It's just whatever, whatever we collect of our portion. So, for the building materials, and then on, I think the, is it non-manufacturing or manufact, manufacturing equipment, right?
The non-manufacturing.
Is it non?
Yeah, it would apply to both.
Okay. So, any equipment that they would purchase initially there. If five years from now, they expand and they purchase more equipment, then that's not covered under this agreement.
Question. You said two-hundred-and-sixty. That's yearly, that's annual? Over ten years?
Two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, that's what that would come out to over that ten-year period, which is, which ironically is exactly ten times what the property tax is of due to the, it just worked out, the numbers worked out that way. Any questions for me, and I'd be happy to have them respond as well. You all want to at least introduce yourself.
Yeah, if my... I know I've spoken with all of you before. My name is Andrew Grimes. I did bring a little brochure on what we're constructing. I know you've all been familiar with the project itself, and give you a little bit of information on...
Thank you.
What we're going to be doing, and how we'd like to do it. As the mayor mentioned, in addition to the twenty-eight jobs that we're bringing over here, before I get into that, let me introduce Greg Kilby with Kendall Electric and David Hunger, a council of ours.
It's hard to say.
In addition to the project and the jobs that we're bringing to the town, I want to talk a little bit about our operation. Being that we have delivery vehicles that would be coming and going from the site, there's a huge need for fueling our vehicles. And with the access that we have to the highways, with the gas stations that are located right here next to the highways, we're going to be generating, what we're doing today is about twenty-five thousand gallons per year out of our current facility. And, you know, we'd expect to, without any growth or expansion, we'd expect to be bringing that amount of fuel to this area. We're going to be bringing, looking for somebody locally to take care of lawn care services, a continuous contract to maintain our facilities, cleaning services, carpeting services, uniform services, companies of that nature to help support our business. In addition to that, we have people that come in from out of town. We're going to be using, utilizing local hotels. I'm staying in the hotel up on the hill right now. I've been staying there for a few months now. They're a bit, they're a family now. So, and we'd be bringing in, yes, we work with outside engineers and contractors and industrial manufacturers to help outfit their facilities, and to help grow everybody's business together. And that's, in a nutshell, what, what we do and what we're looking to bring to this city.
How many vehicle, vehicles?
Five. We have five that operate full-time out of this facility.
Out of this facility?
Yep.
Are they large vehicles? I, I, or you, you said it before, I just couldn't remember.
Yep. Our two largest vehicles are sixteen-foot, we have three sixteen-foot box trucks. They're kind of five-fifty chassis with a small cube box on them. We don't have any semi-tractor trailers that we operate out of this facility. We don't have any full-size freight liner type trucks. We do get shipments in, as do most businesses, but we don't store or cause anything out of here, or operate anything out of here that's of that size. And then we've got a cargo van and a flatbed truck.
I think it was asked before, will the loading be on the front side or the side of the building?
I, let me...
Is this a rendering right here?
That is a, that is a rendering of the building. I have a rendering of the site plan I can set up here. You can probably see that as well.
I'm just thinking about the traffic coming off of Gil, Gilmore.
Off of Grant Mill?
Grant Mill.
The loading dock is...
Is this where they wanted to put the shop and...
Yeah.
There you go.
The driveway here, that, the corner on Grant Mill makes, you know, a slow angle here. There's a lot of visibility coming out of this driveway. The truck track's going to come straight in, the loading dock is on the backside of the building, so the truck motion's going to be pull forward. Yeah, this, this is a inaccurate rendering of the area of the building. This is an accurate rendering of the site plan, of the facility, of the function and operating. That is what you see in the picture is an overhead door. The dock is around the corner. We have a bit of a, you can kind of see it in here, there's a bit of a notch out in the building where the, where the loading dock backs in. So, when the truck, when our trucks are backed in, they won't even be visible from, from Grant Mill. A larger truck, you'd be able to see the front end from the road.
You've got an alley showing there. Is that something you're going to construct, on the side and on the back end?
This alley here?
And on the, on the, on the right side, as I'm looking at the other side.
This alley here?
There's an alley ten feet.
It's an existing platted alley between our property and the seven acres next door.
Oh, so that's not something you're going to construct or pave?
No, that's not, okay. That's, that is, it's purely a platted alleyway. It's unimproved. It's wooded right now. In a previous hearing we had, we vacated two unimproved alleyways to create the site.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Yeah, just to make sure, so we're not, or you're not asking the city, or we're not doing any kind of alterations to the, to Grant Mill, to the road, or...
I think we're bringing in as a driveway off of Grant Mill.
You what now?
Just a driveway in off of Grant Mill.
And they're doing that?
We're doing that.
Okay. No, I'm talking about on Grant Mill.
No, no improvements on Grant Mill. No, no extra turn lanes. It's, it's well-constructed avenue for the traffic.
What's your timeline?
Sooner the better. You know, we'd like to, we'd like to get going in the next few months if possible.
You have a very aggressive actual timeline. I know you, I know you might not want to commit to it, but I know you were saying that you, I think you're all looking to close on the property shortly.
We're looking to close very soon, so we can wrap up the rest of, the rest of the items we need to get construction.
Nice. Same question I've always asked, for, we have businesses or entities coming into Irondale, job fairs. We can't say anything about who you hire or whatever the case may be, but are you willing to offer any job fairs, or offering jobs to Irondale citizens, or bring to Irondale, or whatever the case may be?
Yeah, we're absolutely willing to hire anybody that's, that's locally, I mean, are...
And qualified.
And qualified, right.
That's what I've seen.
Right. So, do we, do we host any job fairs? I guess I would, I would resort to Greg to answer that. I don't know that we, we have held job fairs in this area before.
We have wired it, schools in this area.
Sure, absolutely.
That's why I asked.
Yep, and, and I can't say we commit to give preference over, you know, for local, but if, but if there are people that are locally qualified, we absolutely invite, you know, anybody. We're always looking for qualified talent, and especially if they're, if they're local and...
And I, and I always say, you know, as far as from a city perspective, you know, if, if we're giving, you know, we're asking at least something in return, as far as for the community. I know you can't make a commitment or whatever, but I would ask at least for consideration, some kind of consideration being given for citizens or students, or whatever the case may be in the city.
I know we work with a lot of, a lot of, we are, we're very much in the technical industries. We work a lot with local schools, and I, I can't say specifically what we do currently in the Birmingham area right now, but I know a lot of our territories, we work with schools locally, with robotics teams, with science fairs. We sponsor events like that, we sponsor teams, we donate materials to those type of programs and events. We've got several of our associates that are either coaches or judges for those type of events. I know huge robotic teams are, are something that we're very involved in, you know, the company line.
In this location, you're five minutes from our location facility, do you know that?
No, I did not know that.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of that.
Okay.
You're five minutes from this location.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we certainly imply any of those, any of that type of information, so that we can, you know, we have...
That'd be a good idea.
You know, respond.
Yes.
Gentlemen, anything else, considering what else we need to get through this evening before we start regular council?
You can say that timeline. It's pretty aggressive, I'll tell you. And, and I will say also, the timeline is, you know, I, I looked at them when they told me what they were hoping for, and said it would be as good as well if you could do that. So, it's sooner rather than later. And also, just voluntarily, they had, they had said to me that they, and Andrew just mentioned it, that, you know, the services that they will be needing, they're, they're hoping to find locally as well, from construction work to, to home block. So, they're making a good part of it.
Our, our timeline is aggressive, and we do want to get moving forward, but most of that is, is based on that this has been a, we've been working at this for a long time, and now we're getting to the point where we need to bump up a few things so we can get...
Did you say you were trying to buy supplies for us to build the material from Irondale?
Well, currently today, we're buying them from, from somebody out of Birmingham, because we're, we're in downtown Birmingham. But what we'd like to do is if anybody has information on, or companies that supply based out of a pot of irondale, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to work with those companies.
Eighty-four lumber is right down the street from here.
That's right. Well, and I guess I'm referring to things like uniforms and rugs, and, you know, just, you know, after, maintenance after the construction.
You don't have to build the building.
Yep.
You'll make some lumber and bricks and all that.
That's right.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Sure, you appreciate it. Mr. Stewart, we are, we were just going over the specifics, and other than that, we had no real comments on the first time.
I do want to just clear, just ask one question, make sure I understand something clearly. So, eighty-eight four in abatements over the course of ten years, two sixty in income over ten years shakes out to be, am I reading about seventeen thousand plus side per year in additional revenue? Am I reading that right?
Twenty-six, it was two-hundred-and-sixty over ten years.
Two sixty over two years minus eighty-eight four over two years?
No, eighty-eight four over ten years.
That's what I meant to say, ten years, sorry.
Yeah, and two sixty over ten years.
Right. So, that shakes out to be a net positive of one-seventy-one over ten years. Break it down, per year, that comes out to seventeen-one per year in additional revenue. Am I reading that right?
Well, twenty-six, twenty-six thousand a year.
That's just occupation. Right, I'm sorry.
Right. And subtract eight, about nine thousand from twenty-six, whatever that comes out, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen thousand.
Okay, fair enough.
I was rounding to hundreds.
And again, remembering that does not include if they have local sales tax, other things that might accumulate, business license, etc.
Yeah, yeah, that's only on those taxes.
Right. Okay. Is everybody comfortable at this point for the meeting? All right. Can I turn it over to Mr. Spivey to start discussing budget? Do you have something else?
I don't like long-term contracts. That's just me, you know, but...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spivey, keep us in line.
Was this an actual formally called finance meeting?
Mr. Bishop?
Can we have one question for the audience about this?
Please.
So, those numbers are based off the assumption that the occupational tax will be here ten years from now. The next council could come in and do away with the occupational tax, and then all your numbers go down, and once again, we get another bad deal for Irondale. Just throwing it out there.
Yes, it's all based off of the current situation of numbers and tax rates.
Can I ask a question? What is the facility going to be exactly on Grant Mill?
You familiar with the, if you're going by Hampton Inn, St. James Church, Methodist Church, and that's the building right next door to that, it's right out of street from that.
Oh, okay.
Just, just past the left-hand turn to Edwards. That road that's real short and breaks off, there's real nice out there on, on the corner. It's on the other side of Edwards. It's currently wooded. There's, there's nothing there.
Across that insurance company, in that old store?
No, it's, if you're looking at S&amp;G, it's to like ten o'clock of S&amp;G.
What's S&amp;G?
The gas station.
Oh, oh, where they close the road?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It's across the street from it?
To the ten o'clock, to the northwest.
Where all that new housing is going in?
Negative.
Mr. Spivey, if you would please pick us up.
Sure. I didn't really see anything tremendously mind-blowing in the budget. I mean, we, we made, James made some assumptions around the income that would come from occupational tax. I understand it's a conservative estimate. And then there was also some estimates around the expenses that were having the opposite direction. So, basically what we're saying is, is that we've got a surplus of five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars after the expenses are out and the income is in. So, short story, the way I thought about it is, you've got, we started last fiscal year, this fiscal year, with a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. SAM's cost is about, what, one-point-four? So, I mean, it's, it really, the occupational tax basically fills the gap, and we put a little meat back on the bone from our departments from where we cut. That's really how I interpreted the budget.
Did you say that we have fifty-one thousand, four, in that surplus?
Surplus, five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars.
Yeah.
Five-hundred-and-sixty-two.
Home project.
So, that's, so basically, the way James has it calculated, the occupational tax is basically filling the gap of the seven-hundred plus the one-point-four from SAM's. Now, there could be more income. Obviously, sales tax could overperform. He has written very conservatively. Occupational tax could overperform, and obviously, the goal would be for the department heads to come in under budget as much as possible. So, expenses would also, would be, hopefully not be at the level of their budget for. So, the idea would be that the surplus would be greater than five-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, but James has given us a budget that is in the black. That's just a high-level recap. I know we probably all have some various questions on it.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So, I just turn the floor over to whoever has a question. I know...
Did we not submit those to James at this point?
Well, I was about to say, I'd asked everybody to email James the question, so he'd be prepared.
Did he get anything?
No, he got it.
Okay. So, we'll start this in with you, if you have something.
Yeah, I just had a, just had several questions. I noticed within the budget, you know, yeah, we have a five-sixty-two surplus, but I also noticed, when you do a little deeper dive in the budget, there are some things that still not included. Even though we have money that's allocated for the 2019 budget, and when you do a deeper dive, when you start looking at the different departments, as far as what the actual, compared to the 2019 budget is, there's still some monies that I think, some has increased, some has decreased, that we could move around and make room for, one, events that we didn't budget for, and two, for the councilor's discretionary for each district. So, those two I have questions about, and also, as far as some of the increases and decreases in some of the departments, as far as why the discrepancy, the large discrepancy in each one.
You're talking about eighteen actual over nineteen proposed?
Well, we got two. We got a, we got a high-level overview, and then we got a little bit more, little bit more in-depth as far as what each department budget is.
I think what would be helpful for us, if you all could specifically ask your questions, or what it is, and then that way, if we don't have the answer here now, we can get the answer for you. But we need to know clearly what your question is.
Tell him what you're saying.
I think what he's saying is, is he's noticing that a difference, obviously, in the actuals versus the proposed budget, seeing that there's some, obviously, different numbers, and he's contemplating wanting to move around various line items in order to make way for events and discretionary, but he's not identifying.
What, what you need to do, any of you, is say specifically which one you're talking about.
Well, I did mention two. I did mention events, and I did mention...
Did I make notes of those?
Councilor's discretionary.
I think he's curious to know where you're going to move it from.
Well, yes. One, one of the things that we talked about really all this past year is the lodging tax. Let's see, I made some notes on here. Just let me get to it. In the revenue, on the revenue side, I should have separated this. Our actual was four forty-two.
Which, which one are you on?
Thirty-three, one-four, six, under revenue. So, our actual was four forty-two, so we budgeted four twenty-five. So, you know, that's, I'm wondering, what was, why was the decrease in the lodging tax that we budgeted for this year?
Well, to begin with, the actual is only through August.
Okay.
So, the month of September is not included in those actuals. And also...
As Councilman Spivey so eloquently said when he was giving you all the summation of the budget, is that... As Councilman Spivey so eloquently said when he was giving you all the summation of the budget, is that we tried to conservatively estimate the revenue, because there's no guarantee that the same amount of revenue will come in every year. So we tried to look at the economic environment that we were constantly in. Trying to make sure that there were not any unusual events or one-time things that happened during the year to cause the increase. But we really tried to be as conservative as we could be because we still have some work to do, even with the occupational tax being included and giving this five hundred and sixty-two dollars a positive deal there. I mean, we still have some other issues that we need to deal with. Uh, we need to be able to rebuild our reserves. It has, uh, taken a hit, you know, since, uh, especially this year. We don't know exactly what we're going to come in with this year, but the last time I gave you all the report, we were around seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that we were short, uh, going into, uh, the twenty-nineteen fiscal year. So that's going to affect that particular year. Also, on Monday, we just paid three million dollars in bonds. All of our bonds, or the majority of them, or the bulk of them are due at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we automatically started the fiscal year out in a deficit because we had to pay those three millions in bonds. So we usually don't catch up, or the revenue usually does not catch up with the expenses until January. And if you reduce a revenue item, or if you move revenue to another area, you're also going to have to find an expense that you will have to adjust as well. Because you can't move one without moving the other because we don't have a great cushion in this particular budget to be able to achieve those goals.
Well, for one, as far as revenue, we increased the, uh, business license. And, uh, and I can summarize this by sending the email, but for one, we did increase the revenue license, uh, almost twenty thousand dollars. Now, that's revenue. But then at the same time, from the expense side, we also increased the Chamber of Commerce over fifteen thousand dollars. So, for this budget.
Yeah, there's, there's an answer to that one?
Those are just two. And like I said, I have some other, uh, I have some other notes in it. So, if, if you could look at each item, and I'll make it short. If we could look at each item as far as knowing where we can get money from, I think that would, you know, that would kind of take care of itself if we start moving some monies around, where we can have items or money set aside for these particular items.
Yes. The only thing I need for you to do is to tell me which line item you want to increase, and which line item you want to, to be able to reduce to, to make everything still balanced.
I'd like to address the chamber real quick, because I saw that too, and I was like, you know, um, we committed to forty thousand to the chamber for last year. Their fiscal year is a little bit different than our fiscal year. So there's actually, um, if you remember, the chamber typically does, uh, half a draw at the beginning and then half a draw towards the end. So what you're seeing is that first draw, they actually have an invoice in for the second draw. So, kind of like the, the tax there, you're not seeing a full twelve months activity on some of the particular line items. So the, the forty will be the forty because you've got an invoice in for it. It's just only twenty's been dispersed at this time. So your, the actual is only twenty, but it will be forty. It's actually a five thousand dollar reduction. Did I say that correctly, James?
Yes.
Okay.
So suffice to say, it appears that the best option is to get specifics directly to Mr. Stewart via email, so it'll be documented. He can look at it, and will either pick up at the next pre-council and try to bring things to conclusion, or we can have a finance committee in between.
So, I mean, were there any other specific questions that had come up? I know one thing I did want to recap on, James, and I apologize for not asking you ahead of time, sidewalks. I know there wasn't anything in for sidewalk repairs. Where are we with our sidewalk plan? I know it was like a fifteen-year plan. Uh, we had a, a deadline that was out there quite a ways.
Uh, the sidewalks would be included in the capital budget.
Okay.
At the present time, we do not have any funding for the capital budget.
Okay. Where are we in regards to percentages of repairs versus the timetable that we have to fix all this stuff?
The only repairs that I know that have been made so far was when the company came out that knew how to be able to shave some of the sidewalks to be able to, um, get them into compliance. And I would say that expense was less than five thousand dollars.
Okay. Would, based on how much time we have left in order to complete the sidewalks, would you consider us behind the eight?
I would say that we're behind because, I mean, we, we need to seek approval to reduce the amount that we said initially that we were going to spend. Because I want to say it was around three million dollars. And we said that we would, uh, meet the criteria for the plan within ten years, which means that we would have to spend three hundred thousand dollars a year to be able to complete the plan in ten years. But I, I believe that we can actually move that out for twenty years, uh, to be able to reduce the commitment that we would have to put towards bringing up sidewalks into ADA compliance.
But every year that we don't have something in that bucket only compounds the issue?
Yes.
So you've, uh, you've asked to extend the deadline out? We just haven't heard back yet?
We have not.
Okay.
Um, that's a conversation, uh, that I need to have with Mayor and Frank.
Okay.
Then allow the mayor to be able to bring that back to the council, what he's recommending to take place as we move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Spivey, did you have a floor? Did you have any additional?
Um, not tremendously. Um, and obviously, events were something I was, um, I was sensitive to. Uh, like Bobby Joe, um, knowing where we're at as far as where it shakes out, um, we would obviously have to, to find a way to move everything around. I mean, if we're not happy with this, the only way that we can change it is to make specific recommendations, toss it back over to the mayor so that he can get with his department heads to see. I would prefer, like, I'm not saying that I have a problem with your budget, Chief, but if, if, um, you know, I, I, I wouldn't feel more comfortable if I was saying, hey, Chief, you know, we need you to make those recommendations. No one knows your department better than, than you do, and that would be obviously the mayor's job to get with you about that. I don't feel comfortable, um, changing things around from various line items that I'm not interested in.
What suggestions to Mr. Stewart, so he can at least get those to the mayor for consideration?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, what we will do is, we, you know, and I think you all need to do this, sort of rather lighter, because this is now the second meeting that we've, you know, essentially presented. We will compile all of your suggestions and then bring that back to you. Because, uh, no, no one of you has the authority, all of you collectively have the authority. You, you collectively will decide what, what stays in the budget or comes out of the budget. So that's what we will do. And as much, you know, and I would prefer that you all set a timeline of yourself, whatever that is. Or otherwise, we'll be back here having the same discussion next meeting, not, not getting any further than that. Give us a time, not, you know, timeline for yourselves to, to get that in, and we'll compile that, we'll look at. If we have suggestions on where that could come from, or where that's reasonable, we'll make those to you. Otherwise, we're going to make tough decisions.
Mr. Stewart, if you got, um, feedback by the middle of next week, since that's the fall week for council, would that give you time to look things over and?
Get them, get them to us by Tuesday.
Tuesday would be better. Okay.
Then we could have a right to.
Let me, let me, let me say that now.
We'll have it for the next pre-council meeting, the, the goal.
That, that would work unless Mr. Spivey feels the need to call a finance committee before then.
I mean, I'm not going to try to, I, I would, I would say just in the next meeting. Because I don't want to overcommit and say, hey, you know, we've all got three days to send James our questions because I just, I don't think that we're going to do it.
So, so next Tuesday.
Well, well, hold on.
Yes, please.
Now, I know we just got this budget not too long ago. We've been talking about this budget, well, I've been asking about this budget since June, June and July. Everybody knows that.
You got it last week.
So, so basically, we just got it. So really, and based on what was just mentioned, I think from, based on some of the comments that I've heard, we need to meet, the council needs to meet, and I'm just, people has already said. So we can talk about some of these line items and make sure that either we're on the same page or either we're not. We can talk about differences, that's all. But as far as putting a rush job on the council now to make a decision on the budget, I don't think that's, that's, that's fair.
I want to ask you, we said next Tuesday to have your, maybe you just didn't understand. We said next Tuesday for you to have your recommendations in, what you want to see, what you think needs to be adjusted, changed. That's almost a week. Today is Wednesday. And, and then that will leave a week, a little less, or about right out of a week for us to compile that and offer any suggestions and have that available to you at the next meeting. So, we're splitting the weeks with you. Um, and yes, you got this, you got this budget last week, and we got no suggestions in until tonight. So that's why I was suggesting that you put a timeline on yourself. Because when you have a deadline, when you have a deadline, then work towards that. When you have a deadline, we're back in speeding again, and we're not, we're not prepared to address the issue.
And it's not for approval, it's just to get the suggestions in so we can get a first.
I don't, I don't have any problems as far as deadlines. I, I mean, I like deadlines, no problem with that. I work with deadlines every day. But we didn't have a deadline as far as when we got the budget. So, while we don't have a deadline as far as getting information back to, back to the council, which I'm, I'm not saying I don't, I don't mind that. I'm not making that big fuss about it.
If the rest of the council wants to take six months, take six months, we're going to have, we're going to have a recommendation that we continue on to the same budget.
But as far as the council's decision, I think, like you said, David, we need to decide as far as when we're going to have those, those questions or whatever. So I'll back to James, so we can get with the mayor and talk about it. So, that's, that's just how I feel about it.
I'm on your last question.
I do have.
So you didn't get a copy?
I'm on your last question.
It came out as a hard copy. It was not an email copy. Um, one question I did have for you, James, um, just popped in my head, um, literally today when I was talking to someone. Something that I've been thinking about, but I was reminded today. Um, previously, we had had an ongoing contract with, um, Iron Beach to help with, uh, our city employees and things like that. Is that hiding in a line item that I've dismissed?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Those are the kinds of things that you didn't put in your suggestion?
Right, no, I understand. I just, I, I know sometimes things have a way of hiding, and I just wanted to see if I was, if it was an odd issue I didn't want to.
No, the only thing we went with for, say, management consulting fees, we only went with what we actually paid for this year. And that is, uh, Budge Gerald's was, um, thirty-five thousand dollars. Then we have Bill Clifton at forty-one thousand dollars. We have Patricia Burge at twenty-four thousand dollars. And then we had about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars for an accounting firm to be able to help us to prepare to get ready for the twenty-nineteen audit.
And I'll put it in the email, but I noticed we had two consulting services expenses in both of, oh, it, it was included in both budgets, the police and the course administrator. I guess my question is, I put it in.
Uh, consulting for the police department, how much is it, thirty-six thousand dollars?
Yes.
That is for the animal control contract.
Do we currently have animal control contract? I was told we did.
No, we, we re-contracted Jackson County, uh, during our past, uh, year.
I was told, I was told, I was told back, I was told by the city.
The Humane Society provides a service, but it's expensed off to consultant fees of management under the police department.
So they give us a share of time along with other municipalities?
Yeah.
Has that, what, four months ago, something like that?
We renewed it about four months ago.
It was a different deal, though, I think. Uh, we have a different method of contacting them than we did previously.
Yes, they changed.
Someone from the city just told me it's the.
Who did?
My text.
The council's wanted to prove.
Yeah, I know we proved it. But I was trying to make a point that someone told, told me from the city that we did.
Mr. Bearden, is there anything, uh, that you cannot communicate directly with Mr. Stewart on?
Yeah, I've got a question, but I'll talk to you with James first.
Okay, and Mr. Martin?
I can probably get a copy, I'll, I'll.
Okay, so you'll get a copy. And we have one more from the other.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I don't have the budget in front, but just based on your comments here, I'd like to first note my concern about only having five hundred, a little over five hundred dollars as a surplus, and the fact that we're going to take a hit on the reserve for the end of fiscal year twenty eighteen, which is going to leave us with a really low reserve. I ask that you please take that into account and that you not do anything that's not necessary. One of the things that concerns me as a taxpayer and citizen of Irondale is that we be guaranteed that we continue to have the good services that we have. So, but please don't cut departments that are just getting back to where they were, because that's going to affect us. We pay property taxes and, and we want this. We have very good services. And we don't want to sacrifice that for advance or discretionary spending from the council. Those things are not necessary. But services are necessary. So you please, please take that into account before you start moving around money so you can have these things that are, they're nice to have. I'm not saying they're not, they're nice to have, but they're not a necessity. What is a necessity is that the city provide the services to the people that pay the property taxes, the sales taxes, and so on. Please take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I had one coming. In, in the, in the ten years, over ten years I've been sitting here on this council, I don't think anybody living in Irondale has had a lax of service from, from the city.
For service?
I, I don't think any kind of services have been.
No, what I've heard in meetings is can you get more police in this neighborhood or this neighborhood?
From a council standpoint, you're not everything in the hood to provide services for this city. Everything. That hasn't lax at all.
And Cindy, to your point, I know we, we cut things to the bone. That was kind of the alliteration that's been made. Um, I know we, we've got to put some meat back on that bone, because you can only run bare bones for, for so long before the wheels just come off. So I, I understand that. I, I fully anticipated to see the department, departments kind of tick up a little bit. We do need to make sure that we're being, we're, we're, we're being as good as we still, we don't need to say, okay, cool, we've got all this fat, you know, let's just, we're, you know, and, and our department heads are going to do a great job with making sure, you know, yes, we need to tick up, but it's, it's not going to be excessive. You know, so we just want to make sure that everything's in check in that regards. Uh, but yeah, by all means, our, our department heads and our, and our city workers are fantastic, and the last thing I want to see is any service cut. I mean, there, there's a variety of things we could always take a look at, um, cutting, but we, we haven't even discussed that, you know. People like to pick on recycling, for instance, being a loss leader. Um, you know, I've got no intention of seeing that go anywhere. You know, but James, to James's comment, um, we've, we've seen occupational tax coming in for, what, one month, James?
Yes.
So we're, we're making a huge assumption around one month's worth of additional taxes. So I appreciate his conservative rendering of what that might look like.
Right.
Well, and I'll, I'll tag on to what you said, the staff here doing outstanding job. They've been doing it under duress, uh, with not being fully staffed. And so if you're looking for fat there, you go look somewhere else, you know, because it's not there. And it's one of the reasons why we ended up as good as we did this year is because every one of those departments weren't shorthanded this past year. And some of them drastically shorthanded. And a couple of them are sitting here tonight that could tell you the details of that, James and Chief. Um, so, I'm just telling you, you know, the fat's not there. You know, hopefully our revenue will increase and we can do more, and we can do more good things. But, but it's not in those service budget areas.
Can I comment? I mean, and I, and I know exactly what you're talking about as far as special administration. Are you, I'm looking at hire, give them some hand-to-hand departments.
No, we're, we're hoping, we're hoping, again, dependent upon the budget and the funding and the revenue. We can't hire if we don't have the revenue.
Right. Because I, I know we're just peeking at that. I saw the fire satirists went up, police fight satirists went up.
Everybody went up.
We're hopeful, yeah. But those positions have not been filled, just like they weren't filled last year. I mean, they're still.
The mine is there, what you're saying.
Well, we're giving one of them. We're saying the budget on these breakers there.
Yeah, what we, what we did, just to give you a quick overview of the process, everything that you see there for every department was submitted by a department head. And the department head's goal was to be able to bring their department up to a level that it can continue to provide the services that the city, the citizens that's, that are used, that are accustomed to. Actually, they wanted to be able to do more because they were not able to do a whole lot of things other than just maintain the ship last year because everybody was short in every department. So the goal was, let's see what we can do to be able to get. So the goal was, let's see what we can do to be able to get every department up to a point where we can increase the services and provide better services for the citizens. It's just like Sandy said, the reason that a municipality is here is to be able to provide services to their citizens. And if we can't provide a certain level of services to our citizens, then we might as well just go out of business. So we got with every department head, and I asked them, what do you need to be able to achieve the goals that you would like to have for your department this year? And those are the numbers that they gave me. And I've worked on the revenue side of it, just taking economic conditions, factors, looking at what businesses we were having to come in, see who was going to add to the sales tax, who was going to subtract from the sale tax. You know, because even though we got Mercedes coming in, we have an incentive that we have to pay to them every month. And then we're also still trying to catch up from what we lost with Sam's as well. So that's how we actually got to that point and ended up with the five hundred and sixty-two dollars. We were, we were really just trying to, to be able to get us to the, to the black. But it's like the mayor said, I mean, I, I promise you, there are no hidden amounts that are tucked away that we plan on going back to get after you all approve it. Those are the things that the department head said that they need to be able to function at a level that the citizens of Irondale were used to, used to see.
What's the increase in these salaries? What's the increase?
Uh, well, you got to take, you got to take in consideration with the salaries, you don't have an increase in salaries just because you have employees that have merit increases built into their salaries. So we have merit increases that are built in, we have a five percent increase that's going to take place in January for healthcare. So alone, that adds almost seventy-five thousand dollars to the budget, just because we have a five percent increase in healthcare. So there are some things that are outside, but we have no control over them. So we took into consideration making sure that we add those things. There's no longevity pay there, there's no pay increase there. Those are just basic positions with the merit increases for each department based on who qualifies for those departments for the next fiscal, fiscal year.
So merit is three percent, you said?
No, merit is five percent.
Okay. But that's, that's a big merit.
We have no control over that.
That's the personnel merit set down. Well, merit increases are actually created by the personnel board. They're five percent for each staff. We don't set the steps, we don't set the salaries, all of that is set by the personnel board. Most departments' steps are ten. There's some steps in the public works department that are eight, but most departments are ten. So after ten years, most employees have stepped out.
But do you remember something that he just said? There is no, remember the longevity issue we had last year? Longevity's not in this. So this budget being in the black by a couple bucks, it's going, it will force us to pretty much treat everything as an unbudgeted expense like we have in the past. Hopefully, as we move through the year, we will have better numbers than what is projected. But that's, that's what we're facing.
And if you get to, if you get to March and you have a surplus of a half a million dollars, then you make a decision of what happens with that half a million dollars?
Well, we have to continue to be crafty. I asked James specifically about, you know, doing road repainting. Well, we, we're not obviously going to get that out of this budget, we're going to get it out of, out of gas, essentially. So, you know, Sandy came up here and did a fantastic presentation, you know, I think the price tag was anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. We're not going to get that out of this one, we're going to have to get that somewhere else. So we're going to have to basically really think about every expense that we've got to deal with.
Gentlemen, any additional discussion? Are we ready to adjourn to council and give time to somebody to get Mr. London a copy of the budget so he'll have it? And to make sure everybody's gone over their addition of our proposal for tonight that we're going to be considering? All right? Do I have a motion to make that adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. We're reading Dean at six thirty. Thank you. Councilor Wilson, and myself, President. Um, if you'd like to take on the minutes.
Uh, yeah, I'll go through them. I'll take the motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes. Since each council member received a copy and that they be approved as submitted.
Do I have a second on that motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Councilor Spivey?
Yes, sir, I make an, I make a motion for the approval of current bills for payment in the amount of one hundred five thousand, thirty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Any professional or consultant reports tonight? Don't see anyone. Mayor, good officer.
I'll just be very brief. I'll say we had a great national night out event last night. Street was filled up, a lot of people there. Appreciate the chief and the folks that organized that plan that cost the city zero in terms of dollars. It was a great event, a great time of socializing among many of the residents here. We have another one coming up on Halloween night, the trunk or treat. City staff will be participating, decorating vehicles, and we'll have trick or treating here for the kids and, and folks who've had some social events. Kind of a street, street party. Free hot dogs again. Hot dogs. And we didn't even run out last night. So, uh, so, uh, that's, that's good. Chief has figured out for twenty bucks, he can make sure he never runs out of hot dogs. So that's going to be on Halloween night, probably from five to seven. We had hundreds of people here last year, and we hope that you'll come and you'll participate. We invite any of the council members and any of the residents that would like to be a part of it. Last year, we did it primarily with the departments here, but we had requests from residents wanting to bring their vehicle here and decorate it and give out candy to the kids. We just asked that you let us know if you're planning on doing that, so we make sure we have enough spaces. But we love to have all the council members there participate, whether you do it collectively as one or whether you each do your own vehicle, that would be great. Invite your neighborhoods and your constituencies, let them know it's safe, it's fun, it's just a good time, a good thing for us. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And don't leave us see any department heads, so a department head reports tonight.
Chief?
We have one talking about that would give a report. I know the chief's no big one. He stays quiet, he's lucky he's here. Okay, we don't have any standing committees or special committees tonight. Councilor London, would you like to start off?
I'd, not, not, not report, but I just want to say, working with you guys and, but Mayor, I just want to, with the invitation also out to people that bring new bitters to Irondale?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
We have the Kendall electric truck.
Kendall electric truck out there. You got a lot of candy in that Kendall electric truck. A sixteen footer.
Lot of hot dogs, too.
Councilor Spivey?
The echo, the mayor about national night out last night, went out there, had my, my little girl, I figured that my time was going to expire after about an hour. She was cool, she was having a blast. I stayed out there until right at, right about the time it closed, had an, had an absolute blast. A big thank you to the exchange club and for Ann, who championed the dog initiative with the chipping and everything as far as the celebrate Irondale Tutu festival goes. It was, it was fun. I mean, I know that John Chown worked very, very hard from scratch, had a good time. So I look forward to seeing what evolves out of this whole situation in three hundred and sixty odd days. And then a competing event on Halloween, the Goodmans are doing a trick or treat trail, October thirty-first from six. It says from six to seven on Paramount Drive in Goldmar, but I know last year it kind of ran a little beyond that. I know we came, me and my girls came for the trunk or treat here and then went over into Holiday Gardens and were able to kind of tactique that, and it seemed to work out very well. So I would encourage you guys to think about that as well.
Thank you, sir. Councilor?
All right, thank you. I, I know that Chief had a good time last night, so, so much fun he is on TV this morning.
Yeah, I saw that.
And to this of what the mayor says, a trunk or treat, we had an excellent time last year. And I would invite anybody that would like to donate candy to bring it city home, because we gave out and had to make a couple of trips up to Sam's last year. We won't have that opportunity this year, so we can use, use as much candy as if anybody wants to donate. And then I'd like to thank everyone for your prayers. I mentioned a few, a couple of council meetings ago that, I know Connie, my daughter that works here, her husband, he had his left leg amputated above the knee last Wednesday. And he says, I don't hurt anymore. So he's excited about that part of it, but he's got a lot of rehabilitation to go through. And so I just covet your prayers for Connie and her husband, Mike, as city recovers from amputation surgery.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Wilson?
Just wanted to commend the chief and his crew on national night out, had a great time. I had an early bad time, so I couldn't stay too long. But hot dogs were good, they were good. Just want to mention the Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association meeting on next Tuesday, the ninth, at six thirty at the Irondale Senior Center. And also like to thank the administrator staff for getting the budget to us. I know it's hard work, but really, I just want to say thank for getting it to us. That's all.
Thank you. And I'll have the chief just to mention, if y'all haven't noticed, there've been several postings in the community forum and other venues about a gentleman that's going door to door, saying his phone was lost in the area and it's pinging. But he's apparently just trying to scope things out, because he's been all over the area. He seems to be one step ahead of the police, because when we made the call from our neighborhood, they were there extremely quickly, but he had already left. But it's going on all over the area right now. Maybe he got the idea when the police showed up so quickly in our neighborhood. So if you have any constituents or have anybody like that, never hesitate to call the police non-emergency number. That's the worst you could do is not do anything, because it doesn't give them a chance to respond. But thank y'all for being here tonight, and we have reports of non-council committees tonight.
Not really.
Now, who do we need to inform that we want to participate in trunk or treat? Are you, are you the point first?
Oh, no, that would be Patricia and the mayor.
So it's going to be Patricia and the mayor, that's not a problem, all right, thank you. So that's true.
It was posted today how to get in contact with us on Facebook.
Okay.
You got a flyer or anything?
I just have the best, I will, but I haven't. She's already sent me one. This is my first one.
Regina's taking care of it.
Uh, the agenda such as it is, would anybody like to venture out and put it up for approval?
I make a motion for the approval of the agenda as is presented.
Second.
Second, we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments tonight on agenda items only that were mentioned or asked during the pre-council? All right? If not, we will move on to new business. And Councilor Spivey, your name is behind the first item on the agenda tonight.
I make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2018 R fifty-five that extends the fiscal year eighteen general fund, water and corpse budget to fiscal year 2019.
Second.
And do I have a second on that motion?
No, dear.
We've done it, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And on our second item, I guess one question, Council, we, we can treat that as a regular resolution, correct? Or do we have, okay, thank you. Would someone like to put that on the floor?
Make a motion to Resolution 2018 R fifty-six be approved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. At this point, we are open for any comments from the general public on any item, if anyone would like to make a comment. Just ask your five people working back and bring it to the city clerk when you come forward.
Motion is adjourned.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Appreciate everybody, thank y'all.